Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for August 24th, 2017. First item on the agenda is Personnel Board Chairman Mary Corgan. If you would like to speak, we appreciate it.
Sure. I'm happy to meet you tonight. This is the time of year we get together to talk about the annual increase. But I'd like to just do it quickly in the context of the comp plan because we only talk about it once a year, so I think it helps to just do a quick rerun. In 2001, we created a compensation plan for the town. And we did that because we really wanted to have an engaged workforce. And what we think that the plan does is help us know what market is and pay to market, and help us to be open and fair so that people involved in the plan feel comfortable with it, so the people are covered. The system that's used is comparable to many of the comp plan Massachusetts towns and to many other states. And we put in a data set, so that rather than try to talk numbers with no context, we established a data set of Department of Labor information that we would use to try to make that decision. And so we've been moving on since that time. And we have about 80, 80 to 90 employees that are covered under this plan. They're the non-union management, professional and administrative people, and they're the fire people. So these are the people we're talking about when we talk about this compensation plan. The plan has two segments. It has a step structure. And this basically creates a beginning point, a minimum point, which is where we think that we can get good candidates in the market. And then we have a maximum, where we feel that that's the maximum price. We want to reward people for staying with the town, but there is a maximum amount on any job. And so the maximum, and people move through that, through 10 steps generally, and then they get to the maximum, they know all their eligible for a step increase. So this structure's been in place since 2001. It's structured for a 2.75% step, but with about 55% of our employees at the max, we're only really spending 1.25% because we do have the workforce that's been in this for a long time. The part that we're really talking about tonight is the general increase. And this is where we're trying to look at market and trying to make sure that we're paying to the target that we established back the time we created the plan, and the target is a 50% tile pay, or payment. And so in a perfect world, we're paying our people at 50% of complement towns. And the way we do that is we look at the data, and we'll show you that in the Department of Labor data, and then every three to five years, we actually do a pricing survey to see where we stand. And I just show you, here's some examples of the structure so you can see the steps, and an example of how that works.
Can I just ask you a question about the non-union fire department?
Yeah.
Because I never quite, I don't know why I didn't think of this before. So how are we just set there? Because there's no, there's no step increase?
It was, we did a base market study. It's been a while.
Okay.
But we done, we did a base, a base market study, and we looked at the on-call people. And we established way back in the day, I don't know what day it was.
I think it was 2005.
On-call rates. So that if you get hanged out of your house to do this, and you don't recommend it going anywhere, we still pay for being on-call and you've come. So that is, that is a little bit back in history, but I don't know that that would change that much, something we probably should think about over time. But I think that's a pretty comfortable number for them to, so they don't get step increases, but they do get the general increase.
Number varying year to year?
Yes. The step increase, the general increase is something that the personnel department and the data and the information I'm providing you tonight, we come forward and make a recommendation. We want to give everybody 50% rate.
That's a joke, folks.
Now, last night, last night I was with the warrant committee. Because what we do is we do the homework, we go to the warrant committee, we tell them we want to give a 50% raise, they all pass out, and then we want, so they basically get to, you know, make the comment, and then it comes to you, and in your next meeting, you will vote. So the HR people do the homework, the warrant committee look at it, views it, need a budget, and then it's your call. So I'm here to talk about what our recommendation is. The warrant committee is looking at that as we speak. You will eventually vote for them, and then you'll make your decision.
Thank you.
I mean, what's great about this is probably like 14 years ago, we put this structure in.
2001.
Yeah, the structure was put in place.
So in 2001, we put it in place. In 2004, we redid it. We rewrote all the job descriptions, we reevaluated them, and that basically anchored the program because it doesn't change a lot. You know, in some companies where there's a lot of technology of things, jobs change rapidly. But in the town, we're always available. If in fact a job changes radically, the board will look at it. But in fact, we've got a pretty stable comp plan with the jobs not changing. So from there on in, 2008, '12, '16, we did what's a pricing study, which basically is you go out and take these jobs to a comparable set of towns, and you see how we're doing to our target of the 50 percentile. And what you see on the next page is in 2001, when we created the plan, the town was 12% below the 50 percentile. And the town took some significant action in, I believe, two-year income to bring that to a much better place. So that when we did the study in 2004, we were 5% behind the 50. 2008, we slipped back to eight. 2012, we moved up to two. And now we're creeping back a little bit from down before. So the way the process works is the personnel board with the best information they have with Department of Labor data makes a recommendation with the ideal that we get to be as close as we can to that 50% target, but we only check every four years when we do the study. And so based on that, what we have here in the last page is the Northeast employment cost increase, which is probably the most important piece of data, is 2.3% annualized right now. The U.S. employment is 2.3. Interestingly enough, the U.S. government employment increase is 2.6. And then you can see the other, the other increases for the three years that have been negotiated. What the personnel board is recommending is 2.5%. And that's because we are trying to catch up our 4% over a period of time. And we will see, you know, whether or not we may need a little bit, get closer, we may slip. It really depends on cases, but I think we think that the 2.5% makes sense. The 2.5% costs about $80,000. And every tenth of a point costs $3,200. So we're really not talking about rocking, you know, the boat here. So every 10%, you know, one tenth of a percent is $3,200. And we think it's worth it to do that. So we came, we're coming forward with a 2.5%. You know, we had a good meeting last night with the warrant committee, everyone wasn't there. And so what we did is we left it open, they could email me if they had questions. They're really, they will be there in touch with you. You have your next meeting, and you can make your decision.
Thank you very much. Other questions?
Was the basis of the system before you, in 2001, are you familiar with the hay system?
Yes.
And was sort of, is this a derivative of it?
I think it is. If you look at the jobs themselves, there is a system that puts them in grade. And it's like a hay system. It's, it's a, everything's different when you're talking about town management, but it is clearly a system like that. And so that puts the jobs into the ranges it evaluates. And what we did, and I think we were pretty careful to do that, is we found an outside firm that is experts in municipal compensation. They did the first two compensation studies. And what we've done is we've used a third party because they are neutral, and they are expertise, their expertise is municipal. There's those of us in the board who are HR people, but municipality is a whole different world. And so they do, they did evaluation those two years, and then we bring it back and we look at it. Because we know Dover, they don't, they know municipalities mean Dover. And so when they came back, we were comfortable with what we did. When we had questions about the system, we're always willing to have the third party look at it if there's any issues. We will then make the call for the fit in the Dover system. So we have used a third party that knows municipalities, that knows the system like the hay system, and, but we oversee it because there are people in the town who are HR people.
And how much, how much discretion do you have? Will you, do you say that you sort of tweak the system or bring to those?
We do not believe in tweaking. We really believe in a very structured system that is humped to outside towns and is municipally straight. Now, what we would do is, we're a very small town, we're not structured like a lot of other towns. Some of the comparable towns, Westwood, Edville, they're bigger. You know, with that one person, they got four people, whatever. That's where we look at it. Not that we want to tweak it and say, oh, our bookkeeper is better than your bookkeeper, or, you know, what we do say is, is that because we're smaller, because we're a little bit bigger than town, we just look at it. But if I'm correct, the town, the personnel board has the last say in terms of this, like in terms of the town laws?
It's a very structured approach, and it, it, there's, it provides guidelines, and it does provide the ability for employees who may not be completely happy with where they're placed to, to come in and talk to the personnel board. And the process, I, I think I've been involved with the personnel board for the last 15 years, has been to keep it a process and not to tweak the process. And just this, this increase, we've been looking at the same data for 15 years, and it, it allows us to, to make up ground when we need to, and to, to make sure we don't make up too ground, too much ground as well. So if, if you're a little too high one year, then you can come in a little lower the following year. And I think it's, it's done an excellent job in maintaining the goal, which is to be at the median.
Right.
And it is an art form because, you know, we're talking about the budget number.
Right. And, and we're looking at, yeah, historic data, and we're trying to predict the future, and sometimes we're wrong. You know, sometimes there is a spike in inflation, and the data didn't show that, and so the increase in a given year was less than it should have.
The mathematical term is normalizing. I should have used, Jerry was probably thinking it, but I just wanted to say that, well, he was thinking it, you know, just to...
I was also curious if you could use the 50 percentile as opposed to the median.
That too.
He was thinking that too. So it, that's essentially the essence of my question from an actuarial-based hay system approach, having the ability to normalize is, is a very good thing, and the ability to use discretion because of the nuances of the town, also a good thing.
But it's only normalizing a component, okay?
Ooh, ooh. How about that?
Just to throw that out there.
So noted.
Five points for Gryffindor.
So when we started, we were kind of pulling numbers out, you know? It's very, first year I was in the job, it was like, yeah, because mine numbers was as good as your numbers.
Right, right.
Without using data.
Right.
And, but it helps everybody to talk about it in a way that's neutral. It's not, I think it should be three, you think it should be six. It's, the data says we're in the four to six range, or five range, or whatever.
And, and where did we end up relative to where we should have been? Should we be a little on the higher end or the lower end?
And then you have the ability to pull the lens back and look at it over a period of time, so.
We do. And you have the history back from 2003, so you can see all of those numbers as they roll out. And you can look and see whether what was predicted actually happened to people.
The other thing, you made such an interesting point last evening at Warrant, and that is that you don't actually know how we come out relative to the other towns for another year. So it's an interesting, right?
Because you really, again, you have a chance to do the same thing. They're trying to guess.
I, I like that idea. I like the approach. I tend to think that it allows us, as of us, the community, not to micromanage something in the context of, oh my goodness, this happens, whatever the event was, so.
Well, yeah, and you're relying on data, and if the data's wrong, the following year it gets corrected.
Gets corrected.
I also think that it really helps the employees because this is on, it's not a paper, you bring them home, it's a process, the process stays the same, so it gives you a sense of, you know, I'm in this world.
Transparency is a very good thing.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
I thank you very much. We'll take this on advisement and be happy to vote on it in our next meeting.
Okay, you know what you do.
Thanks so much, Mary. And next on the agenda is the Colonial Water Contract Extension. We've had the pleasure of having you return, and I thank you again, both of you for coming in from the water study. We've had some communiques from the water study with some questions that they have had. My feeling is that, and I will open it up to the board, but I think that I heard Dr. Clark asking if you would be willing to provide that documentation of the reports that would normally be going to the state agencies. And you had said that you were happy to send that along, and I think that that would be much appreciated. We are happy to have that happen. I don't actually feel that that belongs in the contract. I'm not so in favor of adding that to the contract, but I would appreciate if you would send those reports along when they go to the state, if you would include the Board of Health. And also, I think another question in your email perhaps was the exact number of customers in Dover. And if that is something that you could provide to Dr. Clark, that would be great. The Board of Health probably has need in terms of totaling the total number of people served, not only by all of us as well, and private wells. So I will open it up to the board, and I'm happy to have any questions asked. Do you, Mr. Robbins, have any questions?
We had, we had a question with regards to, and please help me if I'm, actually, why don't I defer to Jerry to ask the question, because he gave it to me in writing, and I'm sure I will probably not misremember or...
I'm not sure. As, as the chairman said, we had two very specific questions. One was, given that all of the filings that the company makes with DPU and the DEP are electronic, if we could just simply be copied on those, that would be appreciated. And the other one was, since the DPU annual report is always sort of in the readers, and we're not sure if we're really getting a good count, it's critical, as the town sees more expansion, that they have some understanding of what the actual community by headcount and/or by residential count and municipal building count the company serves, right? Which again, goes into the annuals, annual reporting. So John, I'm not sure, is there something that you're alluding to?
No, 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 no. I just, I, I think the parts that you gave us were, were well articulated. I think we are all in agreement. We all have the spirit of understanding what we will look for going forward. So I think we did get confirmation on, on the parts that you were, that were in question.
So just one question, do you have the reports that you were looking for that...
Well, for the immediate past few years, what I did was I importuned on some contacts in the two regulatory agencies to acquire them, and that's not really an ongoing methodology. I shouldn't be following, so. I mean, I do have, for example, the 2015 and 2016 DEP annual statistical reports, which deal mostly with withdrawals and customer base. And I have an earlier DPU annual report, and I have the current one. That, of course, is mostly material that we're not that interested in because it deals with the rate-setting part of the system, but there are a few elements in there that are important. For example, it was the only place I could find a citation of the exact number of wells that the company does have, and the depths of those wells when they were built. It's nowhere else to be found. We can't obtain it because we don't regulate.
Well, since Mr. Vaughn offered to, you know, provide you with copies, perhaps what you should do is just make a list of reports that you believe have been filed.
It's those two. It's the DEP annual...
For 2016 or 20...
And statistical report, and the DEP annual return. Those are the two comprehensive reports that are filed by the company every year.
And I would be happy to furnish those. Had I known, Jerry, that you were looking at laboring, so to speak, to obtain those reports, you know, I would have been happy to furnish them to David Ramsey. But the DP report, as you say, and the ASR, which is a DEP file, are the most comprehensive, and they will give you, I think, all the data, all the information you need. We'll be happy to furnish those. And it was an oversight, you know, for many, many reasons, but nevertheless, we will take care of that.
Just to make clear to the board, it's a rather strange scenario that the company has to file online the ASR, the annual statistical report. And it goes into what is in theory, in the database, but the DEP has never spent money to build a system for it to be pulled out.
So we can short circuit that. No issue.
So when, so are these reports filed at the end of every year, or three months after the end of the year, or what's...
Yes. The DPU annual report is March 31st. And that is technically the due date. There are occasions when we may be a little bit later.
Like 5,500s, I know.
But we'll, we'll give a take, we're right around there. And as soon as we get it, we'd be happy to furnish it to a data.
And then, and it covers calendar year, so the March 31st report for 2017, filed on, on or around 2017, would cover calendar year 2016?
Yes.
And then the same for that, for the ASR report?
The ASR, annual statistics report.
Right. And is that due in March as well?
I believe that is right around there. We have to check. We have it on a, what we call significant due dates or a calendar, which is in... And we'll have that, but whatever date it's due, we typically have that ready maybe a few days before, a week before, and we'll be happy to transmit that pronto.
Don, just to shift gears for a second, but for my, for full disclosure, I'm a Colonial customer. I think Rob, you are as well.
I am too.
No? So two are three. Do you, do you make any of those available to the customer? And like, any of the reports are, is there a website, or is there any type of...
They have a website.
You know, that where they're...
We do have a website. I do not think that the ASR or the DPU filing is on a website, but we do distribute the, what they call the Consumer Confidence Report. I mean, that's July 1st, if that is due. The SWOT report, which is what we refer to, has to be distributed to the customers. So that's, this has to be one file that's online, and it deals with a lot of...
And when does that mailing go out?
To each address, to all.
I mean, when? You said it was due in July, it's, is it, does it go out then?
It is, it is due in the customer's...
Oh, I see.
...regulable hours.
I understand.
So we're working on drafting that. We begin with that sometime in May because it was data that we have to accumulate, which is required by the Federal Safe Water Drinking Act, as the protocol mandates. And every water utility has that, they're all similar.
You may, must have seen it at one point, whether you read it or not, it will list if there are any materials in the water that are regulated, what levels they're at versus where they should be. All of this SWOT reports have come clean, so that's not an issue.
It's a one pager.
Any other questions, comments? We certainly appreciate everything that you do on behalf of our customers in town. I would like to move that we approve the signing of the extension of the Colonial Water Contract. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I think I would just add for a three-year term.
For a three-year term. All in favor, I'm sorry, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your effort and David Ramsey's coordination, and I would be happy to come anytime you would like, to converse, chat for any reason.
Thank you. And you know, Mr. Vaughn, it might be a helpful idea if, when you give the report to Mr. Ramsey, if you would just put on the total number of customers for Dover, because I believe statistically, you're beginning to just keep count. Am I correct, or...
We're looking to do that.
That's right. So it would be helpful to them.
Be very happy to, and I think you'll see those, Jerry, the customer count right in the DPU file.
Well, to give you a specific instance, the last available DPU annual return has 587, but we know that that's not correct in that you've had an expansion. And of course, we're not really sure what's going to happen if you and Spring Deal do eventually come to some agreement. And I know that's not really involved all of you in this.
Be happy to do that, and we can provide David Ramsey with even a monthly update if you're so inclined.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vaughn, for coming.
I may, I may even read these reports since there was so much hype over them. I may take a look.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Have a nice weekend.
Thank you, Bob. And Jerry, thank you.
I would ask the board, as we've now said, documented several times, that you consider a discussion with the Capital Budget Committee about inserting a line going forward for maintenance repair, capital improvement of the building work water department. And I apologize, I had said to John, and I then rushed out of the, ran into the house, and back out, and I'll be glad to supply it to you. I obtained a map of the town as of 1980 that shows how the different distribution systems are laid out as of that date, and we obviously want to with the data for updated to show the expansion. But it's, it's an interesting map because in terms of geography, you get a sense that there's much wider coverage of these systems than if you just look at it.
Yeah. You also had mentioned in bullet point 214 of your 273...
552 words.
552 words. 552 words. That you also had, the last time, when we had this conversation last month, you had made reference to the emergency ability and the pressurization at specific junctions in their system, distribution system.
Your co-chairing went into your thoughts.
Oh, really? That's never happened before.
What a surprise.
Shut up.
If the board wants, I'll explain that, otherwise I can...
Maybe I, I think in... Maybe, I think in, I don't mean to cut this off, but I'm trying to respect a little bit of the agenda tonight, if that's all right? Because I imagine there'll be much more of discussion along this line.
We documented it in the communication if you have a question, and I know John knows.
You don't mind?
To be continued.
You don't mind?
Oh, not at all. No, 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 we're just, that's for, to insert that in the process.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming.
Bye.
Bye, folks.
And moving on, we have a request from the Long Range Planning Committee. It came to our attention that, well, let me just do a quick little bit of history for people who are watching. Long Range Planning was given a charge by the Board of Selectmen a year ago, or as the year was winding down last year, to look at housing options in Dover for the future and how our town was going to meet some of the housing requirements of a shifting demographics, perhaps, growing communities, the regulations around having a certain percentage of homes be affordable housing. And so we were very, very appreciative that Long Range Planning accepted that charge and was ready to move ahead with it. I think that that is still very much number one on their agenda. But what has come up is that a few people on Long Range Planning had the idea that perhaps it would be helpful to the Selectmen if they formed a sustainability advisory group, meaning a committee of perhaps three people who would be looking at environmental issues as they may arise, or perhaps watching trends as they progressed, and giving the Selectmen a heads up. And I personally am not in favor of this while I can appreciate the spirit with which it's being offered. I am so grateful to the paid professionals that we have working for the town of Dover, who are licensed engineers, licensed inspectors, and town planners, and whose job involves watching these trends and being able to anticipate concerns for the town rolling forward and bring these very much to our attention, to the attention of you, Mr. Ramsey, and Mrs. Pugachev, that these are the people who are on the job all day, every day, 40 hours a week, who are paying attention to this. So I feel that this is redundant and not a necessary part, and I would like to suggest, my feeling is anyway, that Long Range Planning stay very focused on our request, which is to look at housing. I think that's going to be a comprehensive issue. I think it's going to be multi-layered and quite complicated, and we're looking forward to hearing from them on that. So I personally am not in favor of forming any other committee around sustainability, advisory, any kind of a group. Do I hear from board members?
Robyn?
I think the spirit in which this was put together came from the right place. I think this came, or is part of the energy that the Long Range Planning Committee felt after, you know, making Dover a green community, and this, in their minds, was somewhat an extension of that. You know, they want to make sure as a committee, I believe, that we continue to, to be green and to be on the forefront and to look at various ways to continue to do that. I agree that there is no reason to have another committee. I think if they're a group of citizens who would like to get together, who perhaps their business is sustainable energy, and they come across some ideas that they think perhaps might benefit the town, I believe we have an open forum and would love to have them come to the Board of Selectmen, or perhaps to Capital Budget, who are going to oversee some of the implementation of this, of these Green Community Acts, because we certainly, or I certainly understand that there are many residents in this town that do a lot of great things outside of town. And I, I like to think that any one of them feels that they could attend one of our meetings and make one of these suggestions, which we can then perhaps have another committee look at and use them as a liaison to that committee. So I, you know, I really, I think we have a lot of boards and committees, and it's difficult for us just to manage those. So, but I certainly, I commend this, this group of citizens if this is something they're passionate about, because I certainly am passionate about the environment and sustaining what we have. And I think the, the Water Committee does that as well. You know, we, we understand our resources are limited, but I, I don't, I support the idea, I just don't support having another committee.
I agree with both of you, and this was the first Long Range Planning Committee meeting I attended, and my takeaway was, I didn't, I didn't think, obviously being my first meeting, I didn't want to dilute the Long Range Planning Committee by having it in somehow be, be broken up or taken away from the, the people that have put the time and the effort and the energy into that committee. So I think rather than dilute the committee or rather than in any way subdivide it, I think it retains its value to us, to Dave, to everyone in the town, if it stays, if it, as you just described, if it maintains its focus and it has a louder voice, a stronger voice.
Excellent. Well, I, it sounds as though we're all in agreement. I would entertain a motion.
So-
Or I would move for-
I can move, Madam Chair, that, that we thank the Planning Committee and that at this point in time that the board reject the formula-
Formation.
-of a new-
Right, of an advisory.
Of an advisory.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Next on the agenda is, I'm going to turn to you, Mrs. Pugachev. It is the disclosure of financial interest by special municipal employees.
Yes, and you have seen these before, Madam Chair. Chapter 268A, conflict of interest law, requires the board to allow employees in instances where there are not other people available, to take a second position in the town. In this instance, both involve the fire department, and it's important for us to have hall firefighters available during the day, who better than some of the employees who are here, day in and day out, when other residents are at work in other communities. So there are motions on the back of each of these that we are requesting you make. They're both retroactive. One is for Mike Mitchell. He is currently a Park and Recreation employee, the groundskeeper, and he, we are requesting that he be exempted to allow him to work as a hall firefighter under the direction of the fire chief. And that would be retroactive to August 1st. And the second is current hall firefighter who was recently hired and appointed by the board to work part-time at the transfer station, that would be Bill Martin. So we're asking that you, these motions, and we will file the required paperwork with the town.
Excellent.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendation and we approve the two requests for Bill Martin and for Michael Mitchell.
Is there a need to read the motion?
Not necessarily, as long as you accept, you know, these as prepared and before you this evening, they are part of the order.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I think I'd love to extend a vote of thanks to both Mike Mitchell and to Bill Martin for being willing to double hit.
Yes, great.
Just your signature, Madam Chair.
Maybe we'll save the signatures until the end of the meeting, is that all right? All right?
Yes.
Good.
I think that was the new process we're going to follow.
Good. A little less flattery of papers. I hope it's helpful. And Mr. Ramsey, would you please speak to the next agenda item, approving the police chief grant request for 9/11 training and certification?
So we missed one.
Did I miss one? Excuse me. I skipped right over.
Of course, with that chair, doesn't matter.
Back to Mrs. Pugachev. An update, if you would, please, on 46 Springdale.
Yes, thank you. Since the board voted to dispose of the carved-out house lot at 46 Springdale Avenue, an RFP, request for proposals process, was implemented, and we received proposals which were evaluated for a broker to represent the town in the sale of the property, it was qualifications-based. It was a rather complex process, and we thanked those evaluators. And Martha Bolin of Landmark Realty was selected to serve as the town's agent. We are in the process, in collaboration with her, with preparing a marketing plan, and very specific, and we are now working on the RFP for the actual sale of the property as required under Real Property Transactions Procurement rules.
Excellent. And do I understand that there was quite something to be seen on Monday, Eclipse Day?
Oh, it was, it was wonderful. Vitya's already, you know, she's taken action. She lined up her drone to come in, and the property was prepared by, you know, several of the town departments, got it looking really great on the exterior, and the drone flew around and did aerial shots, which will be used as part of the marketing. And Ms. Bolin got two members of the Norfolk Hunt Club to actually drive the horses, drive away and off the property, and that will be part of the actual video when it goes on the market, that will be available for people to view. We really, she, as she said, I think that this property represents the essence of Dover. And so she had it appropriated also to have the horses, since it was an equestrian property formerly.
Wonderful. Well, Mrs. Bolin, we're impressed.
Yes.
Yes, that's excellent, thank you. And I knew everyone would like an update on that. Thank you very much.
You might want to touch a little, because you and I have been able to have conversations, but just remind the townspeople that this process is, is different from just sticking a sign in front of the house.
Absolutely. Thank you for saying that, Ms. Hunter. It's, yes, I mean, we have to follow Chapter 30B procurement laws, so it's, you know, a process that-
Much more rigid.
Yes, much more rigid, takes quite a bit of time. But we should hopefully have this launched in September sometime, and with a closing, with a, with a purchase and sale sign, hopefully, late October, early November.
Excellent. Excellent. And it will be another RFP?
It is required by law, that's correct.
Excellent.
And if I, I wonder, will, where will this marketing brochure be available? Because there may be people in town that might want to take a look at it.
Okay, well, so once we develop the RFP and the plan is prepared, there will be multiple-
At once.
-areas in which the property will be advertised. It will be on various websites, you know, it'll be on the MLS standard listing, but also she's got people in mind, she's got like her hot sheet for the Realtors, she'll have open houses, I mean, it's going to be heavily marketed in many areas.
And that should start in September.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank, thank Mrs. Bolin. Yeah, she's doing a great job already.
Mr. Ramsey, if you wouldn't mind talking about the police chief's grant request for 9/11?
This, this should look familiar to you folks now. This has become an annual grant from the Commonwealth to provide training as required under the 911 system and to pay associated costs on the procurement side. Total of about $35,000.
Excellent. Any questions from the board?
None.
I think we should just mention that it's to keep up with mandated 16 hours of continuing education of all officers, so you would have to do this regardless, so we really are grateful to the police department, who's ever responsible for actually applying for the grant.
Right, it's wonderful. Then I would move that we accept or approve the police chief's grant request for the 9/11 training and certification dispatch center cost support.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I believe we have, or will soon have, a new tenant in Carroll Community Center. Mr. Ramsey?
That's a proposal in front of you tonight, Madam Chair. Community Cycle has requested space, to rent space in Carroll Community Center. If the board agrees, that will then represent a 100% occupancy of all the non-common space at the Carroll-
100%?
Fifteen years.
Wow.
So are they, are they taking the space that's been vacated, or was this?
It's been empty.
Okay. So was somebody ever in the space, or no?
No.
I think I saw a map, I suppose.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's a work plan attached. Just if I may, Madam Chair, I think this is a great idea. I just, I'm so excited to have something in Carroll that's going to enhance the number, the type of folks that are going to be able to experience the building, and I think this is the essence of the, what the community center can continue to become. So thanks, well done. Very well done.
So for those of us that don't know what Community Cycle does-
Cycling is? So it's a spin-type class, so in, in the way that the folks that own this are, that are proposing, and they'll, they anticipate, is they'll have the ability to do spin classes and then other types of exercise classes. So there are all different types of franchise that you can bring in, licensed under, and then to have different people, different age groups come in to enjoy, participate in group exercise classes. So it could be things like cross-training and CrossFit, it could be bar classes, the pure bar classes, there are a number of different things that they anticipate being able to introduce.
I actually, I would like to try a pure bar class. It's supposed to be very fun.
It's a lot harder.
Right, that's what everybody said, so.
It's really-
I'd be very excited if they set a pure bar class, right and out, especially one early in the morning, that would work very well.
And I think that, that it was incumbent upon us to be able to work with the proposed tenants and give them the opportunity to get in the door, and then allow us to help them grow their business and help, help it be a part of a vibrant community. So congratulations, well done.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Excellent. I would entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the proposal of, it's not a proposal, it's the licensing agreement for the Carroll School.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Mm-hmm. For Community Cycle Program.
Community Cycle Program.
And you'll second?
I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And we'll sign after. Thank you. Thank you very much. And Mrs. Pugachev, this is an interesting one, a declaration of surplus property and related back again to 46 Springdale.
To 46 Springdale, yes.
Busy person here.
There are some pieces of rusted and non-useable fire equipment. Some of it is kind of old-fashioned, there's a carol, manure spreader, roller, and it's still on the property, but they will need to be moved.
They are air wounds?
They are, we're not sure if they are air wounds, but Carl Warnock would, with permission, approached the Dover Historical Society to see if they might like to have some of those items taken down to the Fisher Barn. If not, they'll just be disposed of because they're not usable, but they, they do kind of harken back to that-
Days of yore.
There's, there's so many different jokes that if my, my good friend Jim Dolly was sitting here about taking ownership of a manure spread- sitting here about taking ownership of a manure spreader.
And a roller.
And a roller. I think we should, we, if they, if the Historical Society doesn't want it, I think we should give it to Jim Dolly. That would be my recommendation.
...about his loss.
When he came home from work, they could be surprising you.
Exactly. Oh, that's gonna cost me, I'm sure, but...
Any questions, Mrs. Hunter?
No.
Okay.
If you want me to make a motion, so I make a motion, what am I making a motion for? To allow the Board of Selectmen's Office to, to dispose of certain farm equipment left at 46 Springdale.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And Mr. Ramsey, I'm going to come back to you one more time, if you would, please, about some of the closeouts of the warrant articles.
This is an annual process connected with the closing of the books for the fiscal year by the town accountant, where she asks every board that has jurisdiction over article money if their articles have been closed out and can then be returned in the closeout process to free cash. And I'll direct your attention to the second section in this page, Selectmen's Capital Projects. And if you start down with ATM 16 to the bottom, ATM 17, those are all checked off as completed projects, starting with the repair of the protective agencies building apparatus floor, and the renovation of the bathrooms at Carroll, at the Carroll Community Center, renovation of the kitchen at the protective agencies, painting of the ceiling in the apparatus bays at protective agencies, the installation of the library handrail externally, and then the replacement of the townhouse mail machine. All those projects are done, and the balances can therefore be turned back. About a total of about $150,000.
Excellent. And as we understand that we're staying current with all our projects.
Yes.
Right. Wonderful. Any questions?
It's like 175.
I prefer the numbers personally.
Did she just correct somebody again?
Yep.
That's two tonight.
Well, I was just adding them up. People like to know. I could be wrong, though. So, did we not replace the mail machine, or it just was significantly less expensive?
Well, we, we did. It was really not terribly expensive, but they were going to stop servicing the old ones. So, it's, it's a fine machine. It really suits our needs perfectly.
Right, I mean, they've, they've really advanced the, well, there's a lot of different choices now, what you can have, rather than the big, the big ones.
Yes.
And I just want, again, to point out, I think the $95,000 coming back from the bathrooms at Carroll Community Center is notable, remarkable.
Really is. That, that's, if my memory serves, that's, was a $400,000 initial request?
I think the article, the appropriation was $600,000.
Six hundred, right, right. That's still a significant amount of money.
Construction been, yeah.
It's very unpredictable. I don't like to say we can take credit, but sometimes they come in real low, and sometimes they come in real high, and we scratch our heads, but this time it came in real low.
Well, that's excellent.
The trades fluctuated.
Right, and this, and that was the reason we came back to increase it, remember? Because I think it was supposed to be around four, and then, and then...
Bumped it up?
Commodity prices were really high.
Yeah. So, they, that's right.
Right, and there was, there were a lot of factors that...
And didn't we also wait, delay? Part of it was the delay before we went out to bid, I believe, wasn't it? That the prices had gone up?
Well, again, it's the same thing as the personnel board, you know, you're, you're trying to get things approved 12 to 18 months down the road, based upon current information.
Right.
It's, it's just really hard because it's, you have to have the funds available.
That's right.
And if you don't have enough, then you really can't go through with the project.
Well, anyway, it's wonderful news.
So, do, do we make a motion?
To accept.
To authorize the closeout of those article balances.
So, I'll make a motion to authorize the closeout of articles as listed on the sheet of paper totaling approximately 175, between 150 and 175.
Due to your math, I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. Thank you. And right off the bat, we have some appointments. All three that are on my desk right now are for you, Mr. Ramsey, to reappoint you as the affirmative action officer for a one-year term, to reappoint Dave Ramsey as the Personnel Rules Omsbudsman for one year, a one-year term, and to reappoint Dave Ramsey as the Title VI Non-Discrimination Coordinator for a one-year term. Any questions?
I'm deeply honored, Madam Chair.
Thank you, pardon?
I'm deeply honored.
I would like to move that we appoint, reappoint Mr. Ramsey for these three different roles, each one for a one-year term. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey.
Thank you very much. And now, I will kick it to you. I believe you have...
I think you had one more appointment for Mrs. Pugach, to honor her similarly.
Oh, excuse me. I am so sorry, and excuse me.
I completely understand. Fortunately, my services have not been utilized with regard to sexual harassment, but morally, we have one male and one female Personnel Rules Omsbudsman.
Well, that, which is wonderful. So, I would like to move to reappoint Gria Pugach as the Personnel Rules Omsbudsman for a one-year term.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you. Now, Mr. Ramsey?
I have two suggested reappointments. Mr. Hughes has spoken with Mike and Jerry, and Mike is more than happy to re-up as the Town Engineer for a term of one year. And Mary Hornsby has indicated a willingness to re-up for a three-year term on the Personnel Board.
Excellent. And I move that we appoint Mike and Jerry as the Town Engineer for a three-year term, and we, I move that we appoint Mary Horns... Well, let's do them separately. Let's do them separately. Mike and Jerry as the Town Engineer for a three-year term.
Second.
For a one-year term.
One-year term.
Thank you. And you second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. And I move that we reappoint Mary Hornsby for a three-year term on the Personnel Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we are coming right along, I believe, with our appointments. Am I right? Our committees are pretty full. Have you heard from anyone of those that you sent out?
I, I need to get back to one. I think all the other ones I've heard from...
Okay.
And Dave, if I'm not mistaken, I think we've covered all of...
We may have one or two outliers, but basically, yes, we're done.
That's wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries.
It's not even September. Wow.
It will be. It'll be seven days.
I, I talked to everybody on my list twice in the first week.
That's great.
Whether they, whether they agreed or not, I just...
So, I have a similar, a similar issue. I need to go back and follow up.
Now, I believe we are at the point of all of the licenses. Am I correct?
We are.
Trail run.
Right.
There should be a summary.
Time trials. The summary. All right, so, Madam Chair, would you like me to...
Yes, I'd love it.
Read the special one-day liquor licenses. Mass Horticultural Society fundraiser at Elm Bank on August 17th, retroactive. Tomorrow, wedding at Elm Bank, September 3rd, private dinner at Poisey Farm, September 3rd, a wedding at the Connor Center of Boston College, September 9th, a wedding at the Hale Reservation. On September 12th, sculpture display reception at Elm Bank. On September 13th, arts on the garden fundraiser at Elm Bank. September 13th, at the Boston College Connor Center, the Boston College Law School, public interest in a meeting and a dinner that evening. September 16th, third annual Hale...
Halebration.
Halebration. Halebration. Okay. Robin threw that in without my glasses. Halebration at the Hale Reservation. And September 19th, Boston College Roach Center, the Connor Center, meeting and dinner that evening. September 30th, annual festival for Springdale Field. What is DLCT?
Dover Land Conservation Trust.
Oh, very, Dover Land Conservation Trust. Be formal here. Congratulations to them, annual festival. And October 6th, a wedding at Elm Bank.
Hopefully, they get better weather this year than they did last year.
They did. It was so raining.
It was...
They'd set up the tent, and it was just a team.
It was a monsoon. It's just like the worst possible weather you could have for that.
Madam Chair, can we include the Poisey Farm Trail Run on October 29th?
Absolutely. Would you like to?
Include that in our approvals?
Well, there's also like Ride for Food on October the 15th, right? Are we supposed to do that?
So, maybe what, what let's do is, let's do the licenses first. All right? Do I hear a motion?
So, October 6th, wedding at Elm Bank concluded the licensing.
Perfect. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the one-day liquor licenses for those events.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And we'll sign again. I think it works well to sign after the meeting. And now, I would love to have you speak to the Poisey Farm Trail Run, Race Run.
The Poisey Farm Trail Run goes through from Poisey Farm into Hale Reservation and is a great event.
And knowing it, right?
And knowing it, yeah.
And walking through it. It does all three.
I think it's a, a complete loop through all three. There's a, there was a map in one of our packets, but it's a great event. It's, there's different stages, different parts of the event. It happens on Sunday, October 29th. It's pretty much an all-day event, and it's a great cause.
And what a beautiful time of year. Oh, my goodness. Again, we'll cross our fingers for weather.
Right, and they're expecting 250 to 300 runners.
I remember it was well-attended last year. It was a big, successful event.
Right.
Right.
It's really fun because you don't realize how all, all of those woodlands connect to one another.
Really is. Would you like that separately?
Sure.
I would move that we accept the Poisey Farm Trail Race for Sunday, October 29th.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. On the Ride for Food, September 15th, we'll be riding through the town of Dover. And this is their fourth year, so I'd approve, I move that we approve the licensing for the ride on September 15th.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Breaking for AIDS Ride through the town on September 8th, Friday, and starting at the First Church in Dedham at 6:30 a.m., weaves its way through Dover. I move that we accept the Breaking AIDS Ride on September 8th.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, lastly, there's a request for a block party at, on Shaftner Lane.
Are you invited, Robin?
No, it's not, Mammy. I, I think I'm away. They must have known that.
I think this should be the first time that the board...
It's on Sunday, on Sunday, September the 10th.
Actually, a 10.
It's Sunday, September 10th, from 3:00 to 6:00.
This is a wonderful idea, so they're...
It is a great, a great idea.
Right, so they're requesting...
So, the road will be closed.
That's right, to allow for...
It's approved, the set, right.
And it's such a beautiful area in town.
Yeah, so that will be fun.
Well, I hope it's a wonderful party. I would entertain a motion?
I move that we accept the block party's request to close the road on September 10th.
Between 3:00 and 5:00.
Between 3:00 and 6:00.
Approved by Chief McAllen.
Yes, approved by Chief.
The request came from Chief.
Right. And you're second?
I'm seconding it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Now, we have come to the approval of the minutes. First on the agenda, we have the executive session meeting minutes from May 11th, 2016. Have, you had a chance to review them? Have you had an opportunity to review them?
Yes.
And I have as well. I have no changes to make.
No changes.
No changes. I would entertain a motion?
Move that we accept the minutes.
Of the executive session?
Executive session.
Of May 11th.